You ready, Jessica?
Yes.
All right. Just a reminder to everybody, if anybody didn't, I know you graciously announced that, but if anybody hasn't turned in a speaker card and wants to speak, please do so. And let's go ahead and do the roll call.
Councilmember Plot?
Here.
Councilmember Rigby?
Here.
Councilmember Rush?
Here.
Mayor Protan Lorrimore?
Here.
Mayor Tsarri?
Here.
Councilman Rush, would you kindly be using the pledge?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. And just a reminder, if you're going to speak on an item, I know we only have one on the agenda tonight, but if you're going to speak about something that's not on the agenda, we really can't address it or make a decision on it. And if you have any issues, please direct them at us and not our staff, please. Let's go ahead and just, you know, this is not a secret meeting. Just for the record, it's difficult to get rooms reserved at the school district on short notice. So for us to say, hey, we're going to have a special meeting and contact them a week or two ahead of time and say we need Monday, it doesn't happen. So that's why we're not at the school.
Boy Scout Troop 2012 meets at Parks Mondays anyways.
Mondays, exactly. So let's go ahead and move on to six, the consent calendar. Can I get a motion on it? Anybody pulling anything?
Second.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Here, yes.
Mayor Protan Lorrimore?
Aye.
Mayor Tsarri?
Aye.
Motion passed and granted.
All right, we'll move on to seven. Public hearing. Tonight, this is going to be project number 11-0271, amendment number one to the development agreement between the City of Eastvale and Tarpon Property Ownership II LLC Goodman for the Goodman Commerce Center presented by city manager Michelle Nissen.
This is item 5.1?
5.1. Oh, was it? Okay. My apologies, it's 5.1 for the record, we're on 5.1. Go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. This item is being brought to you as a mayor stated, it's an amendment to the development agreement with Goodman, also known as Tarpon Property Ownership LLC. We do have the applicant here and will allow them an opportunity to speak, but to give you a bit of background, the Goodman Commerce Center is a retail industrial business park medical user project on approximately 205 acres in the northwest portion of Eastvale as shown in figure one of the agenda packet. In 2016, November of 2016, city council entered into a development agreement with Goodman that established provisions of the Goodman Commerce Center such as, but not limited to, phasing of land uses, installation, and financing of infrastructure, vesting of development rights, timing of construction for public improvements. The purpose of the development agreement was to ensure an orderly and desirable development of the project, to meet the needs of the city while providing certainty to Goodman of both existing and future entitlements, while also providing a benefit to the city. Pursuant to the terms of the development agreement, the city was required to enter into a 20-year agreement through 2036 to reimburse Goodman up to, but not to exceed $2.5 million for infrastructure improvements. To continue making the Goodman Commerce Center economically attractive to new retail businesses, Goodman is requesting an amendment to the development agreement to increase the sales tax reimbursement by $2.5 million, thus bringing it up to $4.5 million for the cost of infrastructure improvements for the entire Goodman project. We do have a typo in the staff report, I'd like to point out, that the Goodman Commerce Center is required to expend approximately $30 million of infrastructure improvements. Its actual cost is $33 million, but $3 million is not a prevailing wage, so we cannot consider that. So it's $30 million for infrastructure improvements and the city's cost for reimbursement of those improvements is not to exceed 15% of the total cost. So the reason it's important to point that out is because the math did not work in the staff report referencing $36 million. So 15% of $30 million is 4.5, just for the record. The purpose of the amendment is to allow the city to assist Goodman in attracting new retail businesses to the project. The anticipated reimbursement would be completed in two years and thereafter, the city would continue to benefit from the project's sales tax generation, assuming this amendment is approved. So just to clarify a few points that are not included in the staff report, there is no interest that's being charged by Goodman for the reimbursement of this incentive of $4.5 million. It is tied to retail sales tax generation for the entire retail component of the Goodman Commerce Center. So it does not commence until there is sales tax generation from retail users. The amount of incentive was determined as an offset to some of these pass-through costs that are involved in providing infrastructure. So when we say infrastructure, Goodman was required and conditioned to widen Hamner, do the center median, sidewalk, curbs, gutters, pole utilities, install futures, new transformers, sewer, water, utilities, everything. And so that cost of $30 million, that's not even including land acquisition. Those costs have continued to increase over the years since their purchase price of the property to current value. Some of those pass-through fees, as I had said, water sewer, there's also MSHCP, which is related to environmental, there's a transportation uniform mitigation fee, there's RBBD, which is road and bridge fees, there's school district fees, everybody's fees have increased, which makes our projects here in the City of Eastvale difficult to pencil out in some cases. In this case where you have so much burden for infrastructure improvement, it gets difficult for the project developer to secure certain tenants at a certain price per square foot. Goodman has been a very good partner and has agreed to pursue certain tenants that we feel are highly desirable. But sometimes there's a gap that needs to be bridged and that's kind of where the city is coming in. We're working at this together to secure the future of Eastvale. And so I kind of look at this in very simple terms, it's like giving up 20 cents to get a dollar. You know, you're giving up a small portion of future sales tax generation to ensure that there is a large anchor and other anchors that are sales tax generators that are desirable to the city. That's truly the basis of this decision was to make this more attractive and more competitive regionally. We do have competition across the street from Ontario. Ontario has a much bigger budget than we do, they have a very aggressive economic development program with a lot of resources and dollars that they can throw at projects that we can't. Case in point is, you know, QVC, we lost QVC to the City of Ontario because we couldn't beat their offer. My concern is the longer we kick this down the road of not securing the major anchor tenant or several major anchor tenants, the longer you are giving the City of Ontario to catch up. And the City of Ontario is developing 1.5 million square feet of commercial. They have an 8,000-acre master plan development right across Hamner, directly across the street from this project, which we were directly in competition with. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. This is to offset the fees in order to remain competitive and attractive and secure certain tenants that would provide for the future sales tax generation of the City of Eastvale. As I had said, the developer has a cost basis. They've gone to the point in which they can for certain anchor tenants and the proposal is for the city to contribute to bridge a gap. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Protan Lorrimore?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Michelle, appreciate the report. So these dollar amounts, they seem rather rounded out as opposed to a specific dollar amount. How were these numbers arrived at? I mean, you listed a number of pass, let me see here, offsets to take care of pass-through costs and you listed the number of fees. Does that equal $2 million? I mean, where does $2 million come from?
So we have an anchor tenant that has a certain price per square foot and typically backing into that price per square foot is where you come up with these dollar numbers.
This anchor?
So it's a backwards mapping?
Okay.
You want the applicant to expound on that?
Sure, please. So I don't, Ward Mace with Goodman, thank you for the opportunity. First off, Michelle, thank you for presenting that. And I do think we collectively, as a company and the city staff, have worked tremendously hard, actually over the last five years, to attract a hospital, to attract retail tenants. And as you all know, the retail landscape is changing very quickly and we're seeing Amazon take over the world. So we actually, and I don't think it's a surprise to anyone that lives in Eastvale, because I know you guys have a tremendous social network, we have had a signed LOI with a significant retail for over a year. And they came to us just two and a half weeks ago and said that the founder of the company was here visiting the property and directed us to take out $2 million to the budget.
Okay. So he, this founder of the company just arbitrarily said $2 million, that's his wish list sort of thing?
If I may add?
Yeah.
That was based on the fact that?
It was based on a comparison to other properties.
Right. Based on a comparison, based on feeling, and correct me if I'm wrong, feeling that the housing across the street that would support the retail component of the Goodman Commerce Center was lagging and that the performer for sales tax, for sales generation from the site was inflated.
By its team?
By its team. I respectfully disagree because you and I had told them as such that I disagree with that assessment, I felt that it was short-sighted, that, you know, the New Model Colony, although it may be a slow start, they're not the only, that's not the only development project going on in the region that would draw sales, that would generate sales out of this shopping center. There's got the New Model Colony, you've got thousands of homes going in in Europa Valley, you still have homes being built out in Eastvale, you've got Norco, and then you've also got La Chino Preserve. So, you know, the one-mile, three-mile, five-mile radius makes this shopping center very attractive, but in light of some of the recent developments in the retail world with Amazon announcing acquisition of Whole Foods and then acquisition of Blue Apron and then the proposal to, actually the agreement to start selling Nike products through Amazon. I don't know if any of you follow the stock market, but the retail sector all of a sudden saw, I think it was $2 billion, get sucked out of the market. Everybody's stock dropped. This ties into what happens here locally. This ties into their return on investment and their bottom line, which unfortunately trickles its way down to us.
Right. Well, that's just it. I mean, we're talking about bottom lines, it's taken $2 million out of the City of Eastvale's pocket. And have we spoken to, directly to this large anchor and shared with them these arguments about, well, no, this is the market that's coming in, it might not be here now, but it is coming in? Have we spoken directly with them?
Yes, we have, but, so their plan was, well, we can revise this whole thing and maybe open the store in 2020, which without a signed lease agreement, there's no obligation to Goodman to hold the site aside for this major anchor until 2020.
And, I'm sorry?
And so the longer you kick that out, the longer, this is a anchor tenant that has co-location. So there's a dozen leases, well, dozen letters of intent that cannot be executed as lease agreements because they're all contingent upon this anchor. So you have a domino effect. If they don't come, then there's potentially 12 other tenants that we're going to lose and that's additional time that you're not gaining sales tax generation from this shopping center.
Well, you raise a very good point in terms of kicking the can down the road. That is not, of course, what I want to see, I don't think anybody wants to see, but how do we make sure? I don't see anything in here that says that if we put forward $2 million, that somebody's not going to come back in another month, two months and say, oh, you know what, we have more pass-through costs.
Understood. So we are proposing, Goodman team and I have spoken that there are some requirements. I've asked for execution of a lease agreement with this major anchor tenant by a date specific, end of August, end of September, and that they keep the plan as is and that they open their location in 2018.
I'm going to let my colleagues jump in.
Councilman Plot? Actually, Councilor Lorrimore, thank you, Mayor. Councilor, I kind of already alluded to the question, I had a question that kind of was already answered was, you know, obviously making this concession, it's a considerable concession, but is there anything to where we can guarantee that that retailer will be coming in? Obviously, the concession is sandboxed, you kind of already alluded to and answered it. In the, my other, my follow-up question to that is, if by chance this doesn't happen, are we still bound at that $2 million at this retailer? I thought I read it in the amendment, but for whatever reason, I'm not reading it right now, but I thought I read that already.
Yeah, I'll let the, JB is Goodman's attorney?
Sure, JB Robery with Goodman as well. No, we specifically, in our agreement with the city, have said that all of these concessions on the city's part towards this deal, it's contingent on getting a sizable anchor retailer into the center. So the development agreement is expressly contingent on having the lease executed with that retailer.
Where are the, again, I know I read that, I thought I did, but I can't, where are the amendments?
It's in the actual development agreement, I can't re-
Well, I have, I'm looking at it, it was, oh, the original.
I think it's in the original. So I think sections 12 and 13 talk about the obligations of Goodman and the city, that's kind of the trade in us delivering the retailers in section 12.
Got it, okay.
What, it's, Mayor?
And we don't get the benefits in 13 unless we deliver on the obligation.
You know, it would have been helpful to have that in front of us. We'd be good to discuss that. Because that's a significant issue and not having that in the staff report, not having that in front of us is a serious concern. So someone screwed up, because if that's what we're talking about here and it's not in front of us, that's a problem.
I agree.
What we have in front of us does not state that and what we've tried, what I've tried to research has not stated that. So my thought is, is that hypothetically thinking, if this were to go forward, there has to be, without us knowing the language in the agreement, there has to be some kind of condition to this, that there has to be a lease signed and we have to set a hard date. I mean, it can't be something that's open. Because as of right now, our understanding, especially for myself and Councilmember Plot that are new on the council, that have never, we weren't involved in the previous development agreement, we don't know where it's at. So if this does, and that's just something for you guys to think about right now, there has to be a hard date for us, condition of approval. This is only approved based off of if a lease is signed by such-and-such date. And I'll be honest, it needs to be, in my opinion, it needs to be almost immediately. My, if I may, I have another question on that. If the developer has come saying that they need an extra $2 million, in my opinion, I feel that that's just being passed 100% through to the city. Can you share with us maybe what Goodman is doing on their part? Because, I mean, we're asking for $2 million, you just said that the developer asked for $2 million and now we're coming to the city for 100% of that $2 million? If you may, Ward.
Yeah. Well, actually, I want to step back for a moment. So there's a couple of things that when we talked through this that were important and relevant and we're talking about the lease execution, the timing of that. And when we went back to this retailer, we told them two things. One, that the lease had to be executed by date certain and that being September 30 of this year, so roughly a month. And the second thing was equally, in fact, more important is that the store must be operational in calendar 2018. Having a lease means nothing if there's not an opening covenant. So, and for this particular retailer to be open and operational in 2018, that means that they must be open by November 15th because they have a blackout period from November 15th to February 15th. So the route is they are spending money right now, they're doing their construction drawings and the grading plans are coming in the first week of September and then the building plans are coming in the end of the month. So they are fully committed. So getting back to the last question you asked is, what was the discussion? So we looked at a lot of different things to figure out how to take, because they came back and said, we need to take $2 million out of the total cost of this project. So we looked at a whole myriad of options, talking about making the site smaller, talking about not building a car wash, talking about not doing certain components of the project that they had originally presented to us in the city. And after a lot of discussion, it was determined that the best thing was for them to move forward with the project as planned.
And if I may add to that, part of the reason is because they said this would take us back to the drawing board, which means we'd have to redo the whole plan, have to potentially go back to planning commission, go back through the whole process, which means you're looking at a store opening in potentially 2020.
And the last thing I'd share with you, Todd, that this, we are so far below our cost basis in delivering this to them. This is a, this is a money loser, if you, on its own, it is a money loser. But we're doing it because it is an anchor to the retail development and we have a specific plan that requires 40 acres of retail development. We're not about to come in here and ask you to change the 40 acres of retail to another land use, okay? So we need to have an anchor for our center. As you know, retail centers that don't have anchors don't survive. Okay? So we are, we are giving a lot to this project and we continue to give.
Mayor Protan Lorrimore?
I don't know this for a fact, but I understand, I have heard that if you do not meet this requirement, that there is a penalty associated with it. Do we know what that penalty is?
So I think the penalty is just the forfeiture of all of the benefits. So I apologize that for whatever reason, the information about the development agreement was not included.
The original, the original.
The original development, as opposed to the amendment. But again, sections 12 and 13 speak to that. It has all of these contingencies on the retailer. It includes fee waivers for different development impact fees. It includes, we have to pay, if we don't secure the retailer, we actually have to pay back to the city $1 million in addition to passing up those waivers. And we certainly don't get the offset or the reimbursement for the infrastructure costs. So all of those, the entire package is lost if we don't get the retailer.
Secure this retailer.
We're very focused on making sure that the city gets the retail for this owner.
Okay. So I guess?
And I'm sorry, if I could also clarify, without the execution of this development agreement, the retailer will likely not sign the lease. So you have, there's two kind of losses there.
I understand. I want to piggyback off of what Councilmember Rigby was saying. You know, I agree with you, what you guys were saying in the beginning and we have had this great partnership and I think that we are moving in the right direction in terms of bringing something that's beneficial to all. But in this agreement here, I don't see how this is mutually beneficial. I see that we are the ones that are giving at this point. If you could articulate, well, no, that's just how I see it. I would like to figure out a way that we are sharing this in some way.
So I was able, looking for the internet, I was able to pull up the agreement that was approved, I think on September 28, 2016. So it does say, in the event the landowner does not, has not executed a ground lease and/or purchase agreement with retailer within five years of the effective date, the landowner shall reimburse the city for full value of any development impact fees that have been waived under the term of the development agreement, that's section 12.2, page 43 of the agreement is. And even the landowner does not execute a ground lease and/or purchase agreement with retailer in five years, then within 60 days of said anniversary, landowner shall make a one-time $1 million payment to the city.
Is that section 12.1?
Section 12.1 is the landowner intends to ground lease and/or sell at least 10 acres of the property to retailer, in quotes, projected to generate sales tax to the revenue for, sales tax revenue for the city. Question on my part, are, what's the business model at this point? Is it ground lease? Are you selling any parcels? Is it a mixture of both?
So we are a publicly traded REIT Goodman.
That's why I asked.
Yes. So we cannot sell land without significant tax consequences. However, sometimes you make decisions and grant options to certain companies for business reasons. I don't have any idea if this particular retailer would ever exercise their option to purchase, but they did ask us for an option to purchase and we- but they, they did ask us for an option to purchase, and we have conceded and have given them an option to purchase.
So, your preference is to lease, but if the numbers are right, you may sell.
And in this case, even if the.
Numbers aren't right.
And I think that's one of the things that we have given. We didn't come to the city at the beginning of the deal and try to say, hey, we need you to make this deal. We gave everything we could, dropping the price as low, below, yeah, what our basis is. So, we gave everything, and we, we just didn't have, there was no way on our side to give, to take an additional hit, an additional loss and make the project work out. And only at that point did we come to the city and say, hey, we thought we had this worked out with them, giving everything that we did, and they've come to us, we expected the approval, and they came to us and said, the visit did not go as expected, and the project is at a standstill.
Councilman Rigby, I know you wrote something down there you want to comment on.
Well, I think it just goes back to, in the original agreement, it says five years. I would have to, this amendment needs to reflect something not five years. Because if we go with this amendment as is, this basically gives Goodman another five years from September 2016 to find that retailer.
The only caveat I make, and it's not clear in here, but if I recall, maybe Kathy can answer this, that there was a five-year stipulation within the specific plan, not within the agreement, and the agreement followed the specific plan. I recall five years from the adoption of the specific plan, but I'm not sure if that's eventually how it got spelled out.
When was the specific?
It's been a couple of years.
The only thing I recall with the specific plan approval had to do with medical uses, I think, was the only time constraint that was put on that document that I'm aware of, but I could not, I couldn't.
Right, that's what I recall, was it was tied to the 40-acre set aside for the pursuit of the medical user.
So, Councilman Rigby, just putting aside the agreement for the moment, because, you know, things get drafted, but, but the business understanding was that this was contingent upon a specific, particular retailer. And if that falls over for whatever reason, there is no development agreement.
I understand, yeah.
So, I mean, I just, I don't.
I understand that, but I think, I'm not an attorney, but coming from the legal side, I mean, you have in here very vague retailer. I mean, it doesn't have a specific one. I mean, we know what we're talking about, and, but there's not a specific, there's nothing specific in there that says anything about a specific retailer. So, that's why I think, if you guys think realistically that you can have that lease executed by September, executed by September 30th, that I think that's what we have to have, that hard date of September 30th, that we can't go off of.
We're in.
We need to revise this so that it says September 30th and not five years from September 2016 or whatever it is. But we need to be very specific in the lease signing, the opening, I mean, all those, that it's, that there's no, because right now it's very vague, there's nothing in here that talks about an opening date. There's nothing in here that talks about a lease being executed with a retailer. That's just my.
Or specifically, for that matter, that's kind of why I had councilman Rush read 12.1, because I didn't know if it alluded to a name or something very specific, and it kind of went to councilor Rigby saying that it is very vague in that language.
So, if I'm hearing, if I'm understanding correctly, you would like to see us reference in the development agreement a date specific for lease execution by September 30th?
If I might, I want, why this, why September 30th, why not August 30th or September 15th?
Because the retailer's attorney is going on vacation for three weeks.
Murphy's Law.
Mr. Rigby, I have several questions and clarifications, but I'd like to take those after public comment, if we have any.
If I could also add, so, just for consideration, the one addition is the execution, execute by date for the lease.
Yeah.
This store opening.
Assuming a motion is.
And I would like to see if potentially the applicant would be interested in adding a caveat to give council a bit more surety over retailer, to reference a retailer of a minimum sales tax generation of $1 million a year? Or up to $1 million a year, something of that nature. So, we understand, because this retailer is projected, projected to provide, on the uber conservative side, $1.1 million of sales tax generation a year. That's not their gross sales, that's the actual sales tax generation that comes to the city.
And since the retailer cannot be named, you would like something that equates to basically what that particular retailer would generate.
Correct.
Someone can't pull a fast one and slide a different retailer in there.
Exactly. I don't, I mean, I think, that's not, that's not a concern in my perspective. Goodman has bent over backwards, from my, you know, in my opinion, on getting this. I just think, you know, the agreements for 20 years, and once we're locked in, we're locked in. And I appreciate the business versus the legal aspect, but, you know, when push comes to shove, we're going to go towards, you know, what is in writing versus, you know, what we discuss.
I really wanted to comment, just on the Goodman side, is that. Yeah, definitely, you know, going against what your REIT would use, you know, selling your, ideally selling off that land is a loss versus, you know, leasing that out over time. So, there is definitely to that, there's definitely, I can see there's sacrifice to that part, and I can see that. Just wanted to make that comment.
My personal opinion, you can sell it, you can lease it, you can burn it, I don't care. But if it's generating tax revenue for the city, that's really all that matters.
I was saying for their aspect of that's a sacrifice, though.
You're right, you can't replace it.
You can't replace it. Last comments, sir, and then we'll open up the public.
Actually, this is a question for Goodman, and it goes back to my statement from before. The city's being asked to put forward $2 million, and there have been very valid arguments before as to why. But what skin are you guys putting in the game with this additional asset?
What skin are we putting in the game?
Yeah.
So, $35 million of public improvements, we were conditioned to put two lanes of travel and handle.
Different from what is already, I'm sorry, different from what we already understood was going to be taking place.
Just correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you alluded to giving the retailer the price per square foot that actually is at a loss, and only because you're going to make it up with the additional retailers that would follow.
Yes.
Right, I think that's what he's saying, that's the skin they put in, is they're, they've dropped below their original price point on the per-square-foot price.
But I think what Clint is saying is, we had an agreement here, and then everyone agreed to this, the retailer, the city, Goodman, and then all of a sudden, now we have another request, and now.
Two more million dollars.
The retailer, the retailer and Eastville are giving in, but Goodman, I think it's more on, it's non-tangible sacrifices that you guys are seeing, that it's hard for, I think, the residents and for city council to see these things that, I mean, we're giving $2 million, but we don't see a dollar sign coming from Goodman. Does that make sense? And I think, correct me.
It just, we understood we had something happening, and I think that you guys understood also, the similar, you had a similar understanding. And now we're being asked for an additional $2 million. What is it that, again, maybe it was an incorrect use of, maybe it is an incorrect use of term, but this is one that is coming to mind. We're being asked to throw more into the game, what are you guys throwing in additionally?
Say it differently, we're, we're making a loan to the partnership, the city and Goodman, to get this retailer here. We're putting up the cash to do that, and you guys are paying us back out of sales tax from the profit generated by having them here. That sort of feels like a, a zero interest, that sort of feels like a partnership to me.
And one thing I think we need to remember is, if, you know, we're hearing possibly 2020, that's conservatively, if we have this store open in 2018 versus 2020, we're already out 2.2 million bucks. That's a conservative estimate. So, I think with us having the stipulation that there's a lease agreement signed and an opening in 2018, I think it's imperative that we make this happen. We need to get that open. Yeah, and just to further our notion, not only that, but you're also allowing time for things to change. That's true, you don't know what's going to happen.
We have no idea.
Major retail crash between now and then.
Or you could have the property across the street throw more money at them, because there's, there is, right now, there is no executed lease agreement.
Right, exactly, and just so everybody knows, Ontario's budget for this year was $1 billion. So, that's why they can so easily just come in and scoop stuff out from under us. Yes, $1 billion, yeah. I mean, we are just small potatoes compared to that. So, with that, I'd like to open up public here, do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, and Juan Gutierrez.
Mr. Gutierrez, go ahead, sir.
Is it time?
I'm sorry?
Is it time?
Yeah, you have your time right now.
You have three minutes.
You're already burning your time.
If I go over, can I?
You're already burning your time.
That's the council discretion.
Sorry, Juan Gutierrez, whenever the amendment to the lease agreement, the first thing that I thought about was the interest, whether we're going to pay interest on it or not, and from my understanding, we're not. So, that's good. The other thing was that it was a 20-year agreement, and so when I was thinking a 20-year agreement, if the math is correct, and it was stated on there that we should be paying it off in two years, why do we need such a long, long one? That's why it triggered, are we paying interest on it, so they're, you know, making sure it goes beyond the two that supposedly will pay it off? So, that was a big concern of mine. Let's see. And then I couldn't read anywhere on the amendment, well, when was the original agreement signed? And, as Michelle you shared, that was November 2016. So, from 2016 to today, it's changed, it's almost doubled what we were putting in. It went from 2.5 agreed upon to 4.5. So, I started asking, how does something change so drastically, and it involves fees? I mean, I would think somebody made a mistake along the way, that they miscalculated fees from November to today, that was, that cost us twice as much, from 2.5 to 4.5. But now, after hearing this discussion, it obviously just doesn't relate to anything that we're doing to discourage builders here, and that it's connected to all these fees that were mentioned by Michelle. It's clearly not that, so, I'm glad it's not that, because of course, I would encourage more, more development. Did I hit the three?
No, you're okay, keep going.
Okay. Either way, no matter how we go, we have another major development, the lab property, that's going to be a monster, like Joe said, Victoria Gardens on steroids, what I'm called. I hope we learn something from this one, no matter what we do. When we write up the agreement, we need to put something in there to protect the city, because this is, we're looking at the long run, but gosh, this, you know, the short run is important too, especially we're talking about $2 million. That's a, that's a good amount of money. I know we're paying it off over a certain amount of years, but at the same time, that money could have been used for more police officers, considering they were growing, and we need those officers, and $2 million could have, you know, we could have hired a couple, I don't know how many, but I'm pretty sure at least a couple, so, we need to keep that in mind.
Nine, nine police officers. For three years.
I think, that's all I have, just that I hope we learn from this, and most of the concerns I have were answered here. Maybe not too happy about it, but, you know, I hope we, we learn from this, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speaker cards?
No, sir.
All right.
Mayor Tesari, may I address some of Mr. Gutierrez's comments, and also, I think, for the benefit.
It's getting longer here, so yes, just keep it short.
It's important to understand that the only fee that the city is in control of is the development impact fee. All the other fees, JCSDs fees for water and sewer, MSHCP, RBBD.
Tom.
TOMF. School district fees, all of those fees have gone up, and there's nothing that we have any control of. We don't even have a voting, you know, we don't get to vote on school district fees. That's done at the state level, and then trickles down. Some of these other fees are done by those regional organizations, and then they trickle down to us. They're strictly a pass-through.
It's because they're paying the councilors too much.
But, but we.
Did you say?
We, we.
You just registered.
So, we, we're burdened with, with fees that, that don't generate any income for the city. And this is why the council has in the past taken a position of opposition to some of these fee increases, because it leaves us at the local level holding the bag and trying to make us economically competitive when you can go directly across the street and be in a different county, in a different city, where they do not have this fee structure. And I think that that was articulated very well when WRCOG came to the city council meeting and gave a presentation about their fee, their regional fee study that they did, where they actually looked at fees not only in Riverside County, but they looked at cities in San Bernardino County, so that they could put the fees in context of our regional competition, which for us includes Ontario, Chino, Rancho Cucamonga, because they're, they're on our borders. So, you know, we're not, we're not trying to just throw money at things, because we don't have money to throw at things. We have tried to jumpstart the LEO project, because we funded the specific plan. That was half a million dollars of city funds to get that project moving forward. That project is also going to have roughly $60 million of infrastructure that needs to go in. So, the chances of us being back at the table is, that's definitely a possibility when that project comes through.
And I understand what you're saying, I'm just saying, these $2 million, if we understand it, not one of those pennies is going to any of those associated fees that you mentioned. It's, it's basically going from one pocket, our pocket, to an anchored business or anchored businesses, because they're saying, we want more money.
So, Michelle, can I?
Maybe I'm reading it wrong, when it comes to.
Well, if you, if you take.
Because that's what we got into agreement, so all that could be taken care of.
Right, but if you, but it's about the infrastructure, cost of infrastructure, and that includes all of those fees. That includes MSHCP, TOMF, RBBD, all of those fees, that includes our div. And then when you add in the developers' acquisition cost for land, that creates a cost basis that in turn gets passed on to all of their tenants, all of their lease tenant, all of their, their leasing. And there's, because they're in a REIT, which is a real estate investment trust, they have shareholders, and there, they have a cost basis, they're already, this is a loss leader, and what we call marketing, it's a loss leader. But you have very important co-locators that are also desirable here in the city of Eastville, that are contingent upon this. So, it's not just this one retailer, this is truly something that is incentivizing the whole retail component, but they just happen to be first in and without them, and a whole bunch of other components are going to fall apart.
Yeah, that's fine, as long as, I mean, we can all learn from that.
Yeah.
Because I know we'll go to the developer and say, hey, we want to give you $2 million. So, if we could just learn from that, that'd be great. So, if we could just learn from that, that'd be great.
And you said no other speaker cards, right?
Right.
Do you want to speak?
No, I'm fine.
George?
No, I'm good.
All right. All right, we're gonna close the public hearing then, and we'll go to council discussion. Councilman Plough, you were about to say something?
No, I think, you know, in this situation, you never, you don't wanna, with who the retailer is, right, you don't wanna, you know, there's a certain amount of leverage they have that we don't have. And you have to respect that, unfortunately, we're not the ones dictating this. We're just not in that scenario. I think we have to understand that. I think we all can accept that. You know, I think the next question goes, has Goodman done enough in order, you know, on their share? You know, my whole aspect is kind of limited to what Ward had said, is that, you know, that's a 20 in essence, a free loan, zero interest, 2 million, which we paid through our taxes, which we can try to speed up this process near. It seems like that is the right, that is their share. I think that's a good thing for us to come up with the 2 million. And in essence, we don't have to come up front with it, it's just over time to 20 years, again, with no interest. I made the comment that we need to, we're in a situation where you need to be aggressive. I don't like the predictability of the market where it could go. And I don't like giving competitors, meaning the city of Ontario, or any other competitor, to give them a chance to take this opportunity, which could absolutely happen. It does happen all the time. I, you know, I feel more strongly that this need to move forward and do it fast. I do agree with what we've kind of all alluded to, with what council, every council has mentioned. And that is, I would like to see the more specific details that you've already done. So that's my two cents on this, so thank you.
Councilman Rigby? I was just gonna say, just off of Mr. Gutierrez's comments, I was kinda in the same boat, just unaware of different things that the city does, being new to the council. But it is common for cities to invest into different properties, different projects. There is another local city, neighboring city, that just announced that they did something very similar. And it is one of those things that it's hard for us, because we look at it and we say, oh, we're giving up $4.5 million. But when you look at it from a business standpoint, you have to look at, okay, this is what we're investing into this project to get us a return in the long run. And once again, it's one of those things, it's hard for us to really weigh, are we making the best investment? And then, as we talked about earlier, has Goodman put in what they can for this investment, for it to work for the city of Eastville? It's just something that we have to evaluate. I did just ask Councilman Rush about the original 2.5 million, just for my clarification too, the original 2.5 million, per my understanding, is also non-interest bearing. So this entire loan investment would be non-interest over the span of the repayment. I think that's kind of all I have.
Councilman Rush?
Thank you. Take us back a little bit. Why are, what's the rush here? Why are we here today? We have a meeting in three weeks. Why couldn't we wait for that meeting?
Initially, it was because we wanted this signed by the end of August. Lease agreement signed by the end of August.
Because we want it operational in 2018.
Yes, yes.
And what's gonna take you four or five, three weeks is critical to that?
Well, their attorney is going on vacation, so I don't know what, if he's left yet, but...
They had, Adam, part of this was that they had told us that, because they were confident they were going to get the approvals to sign the lease, they had told us that they had released the construction drawings. As you know, it's all about getting, right? So then, when I got a phone call saying from the real estate, head of real estate, saying that the chairman had visited the site and he wasn't prepared to have green ink that they signed approval with, he wasn't prepared to give the green ink. And I said, well, are you still moving forward the construction drawings? And he said, no, everything is on hold. And so the schedule that they had given us, and their, and their ability to release the construction drawings, allowed them to get in, get permitted, and be open in 2018. And so when we looked at that schedule, the 2018 opening was in jeopardy based upon the schedule they'd given us. And that's when we said, let's see what we can do to accelerate this, and request for a special meeting. So thank you all for taking your time to...
I had nothing else better to do.
No, that's not true.
I did have a, I've read this three or four times, and I just don't understand it. So I need some clarification. It's on, let me get back to it, page three of the amendment, the first paragraph. Yeah, so it's on the signature, it's at the top. Until the landowners' actual reimbursement, reimbursable infrastructure expenses have been fully reimbursed up to 4.5 million, the city shall reimburse landowner at an amount no less than 50%. I get that. Of all tax revenue received by the city from the retailer's sales. I guess I'll ask the attorney in the room, can you clarify that for me? What I take away from that is, we're only on the hook for the 2.25 million, am I right?
Half of what's collected at the Goodman Commerce Center in retail sales. You will never pay out more than half of the sales tax collected at the project.
Until all of the infrastructure is completed.
Until the total amount is repaid. So until, once you get 4.5, obviously, you don't pay anything else after that.
But you will never pay more than half to us. We're not, we're not getting paid, and then you guys get your sales tax. If it gets paid, parimpros.
No, less than half, not more.
If the city of Eastville says they want to pay more, you could do that.
Okay, so I'm...
That's right, the minimum payment is 50% of the sales tax.
And then I'm, okay.
So just to make...
It's just, it's worded oddly, and I wanna make sure that everything's clear.
No, I, I think it means so that initially, in that first year, if you don't collect as much sales tax, you're not paying, you're not required to pay a specific amount when in fact you're...
The last sentence in that paragraph is just odd, and I'm not sure why it even is in there, but, "City shall have the option to prepay the landowner without penalty to reimbursement at other date." That sounds, you know, like a, there's no prepayment penalty on your mortgage type statement. What penalty would there be if, under consideration at all?
I don't know what.
Okay.
It doesn't mean anything to me.
Yeah, it's just as you're looking at...
Again, they're commercial loans.
It's to clarify. There's none.
No penalty ever, no matter what.
There's no penalty.
No interest, no penny, there's no fees, or no hidden costs. And then on the, I think to piggyback and maybe if I, to be so bold, clarify council number, or Mayor Portem's, Laramore statement, the 36 announced the 30 million, does that include, I think Michelle had alluded to this earlier, but I wanna make sure it's clear, does that include your TOMF fees? No?
Because you have a...
Wait, are...
What I'm curious about is...
If you're curious about the, the public improvement plus the fees, it's way more than 30.
No, and I understand that. And for the record, I voted against a TOMF increase. Infrastructure or development fees in Riverside County is a completely different discussion, and I think it's getting ridiculous. It's my personal opinion. What I'm curious about is, what is inclusive of that 30 million? Is it your fees? Is it the road improvements?
It's hard dollars.
Okay, what do you define as hard dollars?
Construction costs.
Construction.
The construction of the storm drain from the north side of Cantu that we don't utilize, that we put in, that goes down Goodman Way and ties into Belgrade. It's a construction of Hamner, it's a construction of Cantu, it's a construction of Goodman Way, it's the signals, the traffic lights, it's the additional lanes on Belgrade.
Okay, that clarifies it. And please don't take this the wrong way, but...
No.
No, my next statement, please don't take that the wrong way. If this agreement was not in place, would you still have to do all of that? Or is there anything above and beyond and/or being accelerated that is, is being worked out as part of the...
No, we, we made commitments to accelerate improvements outside of this agreement.
More of that.
We, you know, we, we agreed to, and I made reference earlier about, to build a third lane in the northbound direction, because that's what's in your general plan for traffic, to have three lanes in the northbound direction. The EIR said we were required to do two lanes as mitigation. So he said, would you do that? We said yes. We built the third lane. We're now adding a fourth lane for a right turn lane in front of all the retail.
And that's inclusive of that 30 million?
That's in that 30 million. The city asked us, when Ontario pushed on you guys to do the landscape meeting in Hamner, that was not a condition of approval on our project. We agreed and paid to do that. That's in the 30 million.
Bustages.
Yeah, we've built bus turnouts, and we've added more bus turnout, so we're digging up the curb and the gutter, relocating the new streetlights that we put on Hamner.
Are you anticipating to pursue any fee credit agreements with other agencies, TOMF, MSHCP? I don't think you have MSHCP.
We have a feeing agreement with WRCOG for the TOMF in Hamner.
Okay. That's exclusive of all of this. All right, Mr. Ray, I have no further questions.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Portem?
No questions.
All right, well, what...
Just before the council should make a motion, just to clarify, a point of clarification, would you like us to also add into the agreement, the statement that this is not, does not involve interest?
I don't think it hurts.
Yeah, I think we should, because it needs to be clarified.
More specific, the better.
It just needs to be clarified, so yeah, absolutely.
Al, would you agree to that?
All right.
Ask Mayor Portem, Laramore.
I'm sorry, so maybe I didn't understand it, but initially, this meeting was pushed for now, but then there was a discussion from earlier about September 30th as being the time, the lawyer's on vacation, so anything that we decide now, it wouldn't matter if we have this in September at our first meeting?
The, the component of the lawyer going on vacation was something that was just made aware to me today.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that. We are working feverishly to, to try to get the lease in executionable form this week. That's their goal and our goal, based upon the, you know, subject to this meeting. And the last thing in the world that I wanna do is give them an iota of hope to kick this thing out. Time kills deals. And so, I, I think that that would be a terrible mistake to do that, but if that's your election, then we would figure out how to...
No, and I appreciate, it just goes back to something that the mayor stated earlier, and the fact that we're here all cramped, and we appreciate you guys working with us on this, of course. But a lot of, my understanding is that we've had, a lot of our residents don't even know that we're doing this. And right now, we tried pushing it out on Facebook, and usually, as you know, we meet over at the elementary school, and, you know, $2 million, it's a big number, and I realize that it's to attain a larger number down the line for us. I understand the rationale behind it in terms of tax revenue. But, I mean, we appreciate the feedback, and we appreciate the residents that are here, but I, for an issue of this magnitude, these dollars, that, that's my concern, and that's why, that's the reason that I would like, if my colleagues, well, that's where my thinking is, I would like to see it in September, if there's not this drop dead deadline because of the fact that their attorney, even if we get this done today, isn't around to help us move...
He's around.
This week.
He is leaving on Monday.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Which is why we're trying to get that out this week.
Okay.
And I just, sitting here, in good conscience, knowing that he's leaving Monday, and so we don't have next week, so August is over on Friday. So, and that's why I suggested we say September 30th, just in case.
And finally, also, sorry to add to Mayor Portem's, this was a publicly noticed hearing.
Oh, I understand that.
So it was published in the newspaper, it was published on, it got the same coverage that every other city council meeting has attained, in addition to a public notice, which means that it's published in the press enterprise.
Even Mr. Eastville posted.
I agree with that, but to a point, when we tell our residents that we're dark in August, and then all of a sudden, we throw a meeting in, not only in August, but we throw it in at a different location, on a different day, I have an issue with that. I have a major issue with that.
Me too.
Yeah, I think under the circumstance, I think, you know, I think it presses attention, but personally.
And the thing is, I'm willing to articulate to anybody that asks me, this was the reason for it, and this is, this is what was going on. You know, there's, we don't have anything to hide, and I understand perception, but, you know, and I already answered one.
Yeah.
People are already posting stuff.
Same with me, and I think that it has a little bit more clarification when you share with us what you just shared, that our hope is that we get this signed before the attorney leaves on vacation. Worst-case scenario, we're gonna extend it till he gets back from vacation. And I think that's what helps us, in that we need to kind of relay to residents, that was the urgency in the meeting was, because we were hoping to get it done, and we just found out that he had to leave, or he's leaving on vacation, that now we extend our deadline just in case we don't get it done this week.
So if council pushes this back to be reheard in September, it has to be publicly noticed again, which means that it has to be delivered to the press enterprise 15 days before the council meeting, in order to make their publication deadline. So...
Well, I would move that we approve the applicant's request, and with the stipulation or the condition that we add in the language that was asked about regarding interest, and if there's no signed lease agreement by September 30th, we revert back to the old contract, which was the 2.5. More clarifications on the retailer, correct?
How are we gonna do this on the fly, though? I'm a little bit wary. Drafting language of such importance? Where is it gonna be, you know, the whereabouts and what have yous, and what you call it?
Attorney stuff.
Yeah, I know.
But that's my motion. Michelle, can you go over this real quick, just the list, again, the modifications, just one more time to hear it for order?
So your additional conditions to be included in the development, the amendment to the development agreement was lease execution by September 30th of 2017, or it reverts back to the original agreement. Second condition was a store opening in 2018. Third condition was that this is no, with no interest accrued to the city, no interest charged to the city. And potentially, a fourth condition was that it needs to be a retailer of sales tax generation up to, but not limited to, no, sorry, sales tax generation of $1 million per year.
I think that's maybe the tricky one.
Okay.
Just because the first year of sales, I mean, normally, those hurdles are, you know, at year three or something, it's a look back, and so I don't...
The development agreement says, gives a minimum land size that they would have to take down, which relates to the size and projects it out. That's, that was the rationale in the original development agreement.
10 acres. 10 acres? Yeah.
Okay.
So we could modify that fourth condition?
I think it exists.
That it exists already.
It exists.
Can, can we modify the first condition? What was that again? I'm sorry?
To have an executed lease agreement by September 30th of 2017, or this reverts back to the original agreement approved in November of 2016.
I would propose to modify it, that if we don't have a lease agreement signed, that it's all null and void.
it's all null and void.
Let's go.
That the original DA is also null and void. Because, I mean, we all know that the original DA is, it's all, goes hand in hand.
I think that's fair.
There are, there are some terms in there that were, it was not, the DA does more than just the sales tax.
Just the portion.
The portion about the...
The sales tax repayment.
Yes.
Portion.
I would be more comfortable with just taking it, taking us back to the agreement, because, you know, there's a lot of time and effort invested in that. And, again, now having it in front of us, and, you know, I don't want to take something out that we agreed upon, you know, two years ago, in the ether. My preference would just be to, you know, whatever language is agreed upon and appropriate, but that either the amendment, the First Amendment be avoided, or that particular section of it, we just revert back. However, you want to draft it to satisfy your own internal legal ramifications. But I wouldn't, I would prefer not to take us back to zero.
Yeah.
Because there is a 1 million dollar payment to the city.
I appreciate this, Peter.
If, if this is a, if the retailer lease agreement is not executed.
So, but can we keep, because there's already the 2.5 million. So can we, can we make it so that if we don't have the lease signed, that that portion of it is taken out by September 30th?
I understand what you're saying, but I agree with, oh, you mean the new one or the old one?
This one. Can we go back and say if this one, if we don't execute, execute the lease by September 30th, 2017, that not only is this not applicable, but also the 2.5 million from the original DA is not...
Yeah, I think it goes back to what Councilman Rush just said. You know, we voted on and made an agreement to add this, that caveat to it, and then take away something that was previously agreed upon. And then, the language.
But we previously agreed on just that, too.
Right. But that's why...
So if we're going off of, based off of that, then we shouldn't do this. Because we're amending it. So we're amending, we can amend anything on there.
Right. But we're also amending with a different timeline. So the idea is to do this and to get the lease agreement signed immediately.
So if we don't get the lease agreement signed, we're still on the hook for that 2.5 million dollars?
Subject to...
Subject to develop.
Of a retailer of a minimum 10 acres for generation.
I would think the city would, if this deal does not go through, God forbid, but if that were to happen, I would think the city would still want a strong competitive environment to bring a different retailer into it. And so, the question is, we set that kind of framework for it. The question is, do we keep that framework so we can all keep going, or do we come back to the drawing board?
Start over.
And start over to try and get the...
To have some adaptation.
Right.
My biggest thing is, I just want to make sure that as a city, we're protected, that if we don't get the retailer that we have planned for, I guess is the best way to put it, that, that we aren't on the hook, that all of a sudden, now we're scrounging for another retailer, and we, Goodman brings in a retailer that we aren't too thrilled about, and now we're put on the hook for the 2.5 million dollars. That's what I want to make sure that we're protected from.
There aren't a lot of retailers that you're going to dislike that take over 10 acres. But in addition, we do have a very strong relationship with the city, and we work very, very closely with all of the leads we have, to make sure that the city's very comfortable with the retailers that we're bringing in. We've got, you know, a hamburger, fast food restaurant that the city's very supportive of. We've got a coffee shop that are both, you know, looking to this first retailer to come in, so that they can move forward, that the city's very supportive of. And we have a list, a litany of other ones that are, that we've discussed, you know, in detail with the city, to make sure that it's the, it's the type and quality of retailers that's going to, that are going to make this a long-lasting and very productive center.
But I think, Todd, to give you the comfort, it's a loan. Right? You're not going to pay anything without that sales tax generating. So, I mean, is your concern that we're going to show up with some retail that you don't like?
My concern is, is if we plan and we, we want a retailer that's going to produce a certain amount of sales tax revenue to the city, I just don't want, all of a sudden, a different retailer to come in that's not going to produce that kind of sales tax revenue, that is willing to pay the price per square foot, but isn't going to produce as much. Because I know, I know Goodman's bottom line is, is they want to make sure that, yes, they are a partner with the city, but they aren't as concerned about the sales tax revenue as they are more about the price per square foot.
We're concerned about it, to be clear, very clear. We don't sell anything but for certain unusual circumstances. So we're concerned about a retail development that is sustainable and is going to thrive, which is the exact same thing that you and the residents want. I mean, our, our goals, ours could not be more aligned than they are right now.
Due to the fact that they're focused on leasing it out, selling it?
Well, I would second the mayor's motion with the language regarding the interest, the timeframe being September 30th of this year for a signed lease agreement. And I would stipulate that if that's not the case, then the amendment, the First Amendment is, as I mentioned, rescinded and null and void, that portion of it, we go back to the original agreement, whatever final language you come up with, if I'm missing any.
For a store opening.
Store opening for this year, 2018.
2000, what?
Can we put a date to that?
September, like, would be a year.
Could say by November 1st.
Because isn't November 15 their deadline?
Got it.
But if we put November 1st?
They're going to need every day.
Yeah.
We've been pushing them for a year to get it done. We push them every time we see them. And they tell us the same story, and we're going to, we're going to have to chug to get it.
I mean, I would, because, because we have already put this language into the lease, the December, or the 2018, I would prefer to see it aligned with December 31 of 2018. If they need to go change their policy and open, open a store during the blackout, I mean...
What do you mean by the blackout?
The profit.
This retailer...
They don't open new stores during a particular period of the year.
During the holiday shopping season.
Retail peak seasons.
After Black Friday.
So, yeah, I...
I mean, I just, I discourage you from setting a date that's different than calendar.
And then what, so what's the date in the lease? December 31st?
Yeah, 2018.
That would be inclusive in my motion. So I would second that motion.
Councilmember Pla?
Enter, speaking.
Mayor, he...
Yeah, we clarified that.
Councilmember Pla?
Yes.
Councilmember Reap?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lorimer?
Yes.
Mayor Tesari?
Yes.
Motion passes by here.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next regular meeting will be September 13th at 6:30, and that's at Rosa Parks. Meeting adjourned.